Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Let the meeting reflect, we are starting at six thirty P. M. Tonight, first off, we are going to do a recognition of two Thornton Academy art contest winners. Winners of the Phase Two of the Saco Arts Commission Traffic Signal Cabinet cabinet renovation project. The Saco Arts Commission was created in two thousand twenty-one to bring together members of the community, city councilors and staff to improve the aesthetic quality of the city's public space. The Traffic Signal Cabinet renovation project focuses on creating art for traffic signal cabinets located in key locations downtown and expanding into the greater Saco community. This project creates a great opportunity to make everyday functional objects visually appealing and vibrant in the Saco community. The first phase of this project was successfully completed in two thousand twenty-two with three beautified cabinets downtown Main Street featuring artwork from local Thornton Academy students. For Phase Two, Saco Arts Commission, who worked with Thornton Academy Visual Arts Department to update two more traffic signal cabinets, one located on the Thornton Academy campus at the intersection of Fairfield and Main Street, and one located at the intersection of Main Street and Ocean Park Road. I am pleased to announce that Amelia Ng Young Howe and Larry Zetan Zhou, both Grade Twelve T. A. students, are the two winning designers of Phase Two of the Traffic Signal Cabinet renovation project. Amelia's artwork was selected for the Thornton Academy location, and Larry's artwork for the Ocean Park Road location. The installation of Amelia and Larry's artwork is scheduled for late April with a ribbon-cutting ceremony to be held in May. Congratulations to Amelia and Larry, and thank you for contributing to your creativity and the sense of beauty and design to share with the city of Saco. And we do have them present in the audience, and I would like a quick photo with council on this side of the D. S.
Castle has, can I have you switch sides? Thank you. And then if everyone could tighten up this way a little bit. Perfect, thank you. All right, here we go, one, two, three, and we'll do one more, one, two, three. That's one, maybe, one, two. Thank you.
Okay, so now that brings us to our joint meeting with the school board. And tonight we are getting a present budget presentation and the bond question and estimates for the tax impact. Welcome.
All right, good evening, everybody. Good to see you tonight. Here for several items, and I've handed you out some packets. The first two that we will be dealing with is the budget presentation packet, and then I have an updated revenue sheet that we were able to make a couple of changes to, a change to in the positive for the taxpayers after I'd already printed these ones and I wasn't going to run a whole new packet again. So at our meeting last month, you guys had an opportunity to learn a little bit about the funding formula, learn a little bit about our concerns around valuation and how valuation impacts a formula. And so unless people want a, to go through that again, just raise your hand and we can, and if not, I'm going to kind of move a little bit quicker through through those pieces. As we talked about last time, we know that valuation is one of the driving forces of the school funding formula, and we talked about how in this scenario, in this budget, the Saco valuation increase was seven percent compared to the state average at eight percent, which put us in a really good spot subsidy-wise, which helped bring the one point five million dollars more because we were lagging behind the state piece. And when the state puts more money into a funding formula, that's more distributed to schools, and if you're on the good side of the valuation increase, the mill rate lowers as expected and brings you more subsidy as a school department. And we talked a little bit about the formula, about how we had seen slight growth in student count over a two-year average. And we talked about how one in four of our students in Saco were on the living economically disadvantaged, and how we have seen a change in our population with a rising number of E. L. L. students into our communities. We discussed on page three, the bus leases, and how this all figures out and comes to a point where Saco receives, you know, nineteen million-plus dollars in state subsidy. What I really want to start talking to you about tonight is a little bit more about our population. And if you turn to the kind of page that talks about Saco demographics, wanted to kind of give us a snapshot, it's kind of got a light blue background, so it was easy to to pull out, wanted to kind of talk to you about where we were from a student piece. And I've highlighted the top years in red, one because you'll see growth in our overall student subsidy. And this breaks down of where we are pre-K through eight and nine through twelve. And in that situation, this year, our subsidizable students was two thousand seven hundred and ninety, and you can see the trend. One of the things that I would caution us all about is knowing that approximately eighty-five of those students are with us as our new neighbors in the hotel. So if something were to change there, not only would we see a decrease in students that were in our system, but it could have an impact on subsidy for a number of students, number of E. L. students, and those pieces. And so that program with the state has brought us a diverse, rich population into our community, and I just want people to see where we've kind of been over time, both pre-K through eight and pre-K through twelve. Now, one of the things that you would see is you'd say, well, what happened in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty that drove our elementary population up so much higher than the year before? And that's going to be the establishment of pre-K. So those those numbers are going to are going to bring that piece with it. The next looks, the next three sections of that looks at some of the major subgroups that we have here. And I want to draw your attention, when you think about the programming that we have in our schools, is that now we are looking at pre-K through twelve, five hundred and twelve students who receive special services, so almost twenty percent of our population are receiving special services. You can see that almost ten percent of our population are students whose first language is not English, and that's quite an increase, and we can see where that change over time became. And then looking at our economic status and seeing now that, and I earlier said one in four, and I should have said three out of, three out of ten, thirty percent of our our students, thirty-one percent of our students are in a home that's economically disadvantaged. And I think that it's important for people to remember that if you've had kids or you've filled out some of those forms in the past, that federal poverty standard is extremely low. And so you're classifying kiddos based off off that level, knowing that we have many members of our society that are just slightly above that threshold, that it's a struggle, and so that we need to remember those pieces. Any questions about demographics throughout the city in our schools? Please stop me along the way if you have have questions. Kevin?
What explains the nine through twelve economic status dropping, the numbers dropping that need economic designation?
So one of the pieces that has been a little bit more challenging for all school departments across the state is now that you don't have to have forms filled out for the free and reduced lunch because pre-K through eight, we have a universal free lunch for all kiddos, less of an incentive to fill those bags. And it's also just tougher in any school organization to get high school kids to return forms than it is an elementary kid. When the packet comes home on a Thursday with your elementary kid is pretty easy. I don't know, but for middle school and high school, I don't see a lot of forms to actually make it all the way home to us in our household, and so that tends to be a a state, a trend statewide. When the D. O. E. in this situation for a community like Saco, who doesn't have the public high school and we tuition kids, or in Dayton, they use your ratio and percentage of your pre-K through eight to calculate your free and reduced lunch situation. Okay, the next page that I really want to draw your attention to, you may remember this from last year. This is a a graph of all of the school departments in Southern Maine, and you can look at the cost per student that's that's expended. Now, there's two categories in this, hmm? This one. In this situation, there are two categories removed, debt service and vocational education. Vocational education is removed because you have three centers in Southern Maine, which would be Westbrook, Sanford, and Biddeford. And state funding for a vocational center comes to the vocational center, and there's not, for those communities, really not that much of a local cost because you get it all from the state, so it's not really a category. You'd see a lot of zeros in a lot of communities other than those ones. And then debt service, because there are a couple of different types of debt service. There's the debt service that we'll be talking about later, that the state will pick up for a school construction project, and there's a debt service situation that a municipality may vote to hold, you know, just like we will be having here as well, that they would vote to include any debt service. But when you look at the Saco School Department in blue, and I get a little bit got cut off on the photocopying sheet, you're looking at a situation where Saco Schools as a whole is spending just over the state average for funding per child. Now, when we look at that situation, and you look at sixteen, eight, nine, one, this is based off the data from two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and you can see in places that spend much more money per child on their educational experience. And so if you remember from the prior meeting, when we talked about this, you would say, okay, why is Saco's regular instruction line so much higher than what state average is for regular instruction? And remember that we talked about when tuition is paid through a nine-through-twelve school, that is a regular education expense, so it doesn't quite, it's tougher to compare the categories here of apples to apples because so much just shifted in that expense in this community, just like in Dayton, as you can see in gray right underneath it because they tuition out students. But the final number gives you an overall spending is where we are as a community for our students pre-K through twelve. If you flip to the next page, we had talked about the classroom, the reductions that we had made in the general ed budget, and if you referred to the memo that I provided you last time, it gave us class sizes, and we were recommending a reduction of two classroom positions based off enrollment counts, a reduction of one technology coordinator at Young and Fairfield School. We had reduced capital expenditures, I. E. P. coverage, and that was going to be something that we picked up internally. We've been very successful for summer school to get Title One reallocation grant, and so that money is set in that budget and not been spent the last couple of years, and we believe that success is the same. Supplies, and and when we talk about a reduction, it's, you know, from the, just making sure we're staying on pace from year after year. But we had also added one facilities maintenance staff into this budget because, one, we have two, we have two people for the break fix, and as we move towards new buildings, we need to make sure that we are maintaining those buildings and ramping up to that piece. On the right-hand side, we had talked about the reasons of of the increase and what got there. And you can basically look at four categories, from tuition, salary and step increases, health insurance changes, and F. M. L. payroll tax was the number I provided you last time of a hundred and eleven thousand increase. Since the last time we met as a group, the Budget and Finance Committee has reviewed, and we haven't really made any changes to the budget other than some things that we found ourself. We found a couple of situations where there was a duplicate entry into the budget, and we learned that for the payroll tax piece, any contract that was settled prior to October twenty-third, twenty-third of two thousand twenty-three, those employees will not have to participate in the F. M. L. A. payroll tax until their collective bargaining agreement expires. So our teacher's contract, which was settled last June, would not be part of this piece, and we would not be responsible for the point five, and the staff wouldn't be responsible. And with all of those things that we were able to just fine-tune, double entries, that piece, we were able to reduce about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand from the budget. Additionally, today, we were working with Old Orchard Beach, who we partner with for adult education, and as we finalize the adult education revenues and budget, we were able to reduce last year's budget number by twenty-one, one, eight, eight. And so what I gave to you before you guys is that we will have an increase in expenditures with what we're proposing of two-point-five-six-five million dollars or five-point-one-seven percent expenditure increase. When we move our way through the revenue side of the pieces and looking at the reductions, the net to the taxpayer at this point in time would be four-point-oh-four percent. Now, some things that we're still waiting on, we have ten percent built into the budget for health insurance increase, and historically, somewhere around the twenty-fifth of March over the last several years, the M. E. A. Benefits Trust will send us an email that says the highest rate in the state will be six percent, let's say. If that was a scenario, we would be able to talk about as a school what we would do with the with that four percent, whether that would be taxpayer reductions, look at positions, look at capital, look at all of those pieces, and we're looking at about forty-five thousand, Jason, a percent. So forty-five thousand a percent would would be able to come back to our, this piece. As we worked across this, had great communication with John as the city administrator, just trying to figure out of how we could get to a point of something that we could propose that was not in one direction, just a major challenge for everybody to deal with, but to get the resources that we would need out there while being trying to be responsible because we know that we're going to talk more about capital funding and pieces in the next piece. So this is where we are today. Obviously, some things will change over health insurance. And so for the budget side of things, the dollars and cents, it really would open it up to any questions that people may have, and I'll do my best to answer them for you.
Any questions for Superintendent Ray? Council Hewitt?
Superintendent, quick question. With the reduction of the of Wendy Cannon for Fairfield and Young School.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
The rec, the elimination of the technology coordinator for Fairfield and Young, how do you propose to meet the teachers' needs because we're so reliant on technology nowadays?
Well, I think that we look at the needs and we look at the department as a whole and our staffing ratios as a whole. We also have to look forward to and look towards, one of the things we've really tried to avoid is getting to a situation when we open a new school that not all of the positions are there at that time, because some of it will be just based off size and what you can do and what you can have. So I think our regular technology department can handle some of those. I think we also would look at an increase in what other employees in the district may be able to offer. And then, you know, just also looking at the changing needs of our students over time. If city council or school committee were to come back and say, hey, Jeremy, we'd want to put a different, put a position back into the budget, we may want to have a conversation about what are the needs of our students and staff based off all of the things that happen in our society, is that going to be the right position? The other piece that when you look at, especially if you were looking at, say, support positions for students in this scenario, I think if we looked and looked at some of our ratios for guidance, resiliency, and some of those things, I would really want to have a conversation about what are the needs at Burns, because Burns School tends to have one phys ed teacher, six hundred, hundred kids, only two guidance counselors, social worker, and really think about some of those needs that are challenging for us.
One other question, you said you're reducing the amount of need for I. E. P. coverage for state clients. Could you explain that?
Yeah, so we get state agency clients that come in, and historically, you get a revenue from the state during that piece. And then looking at our team at central office and trying to keep the, you know, the needs of of the district in mind, we determined that we could cover those IEPs in-house and not have to have the contracted service to someone who wasn't an employee of the district to cover those, and we would just need to cover more meetings ourself, and that revenue would come in, stay within the district, and not go out to a contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? School Board Member Gail?
Jeremy, can you just touch a little bit, following up on our last school board meeting, on the reduction of the two classroom positions, kind of how we got there, and then also the, I thought that discussion around supplies at the last meeting was important for folks to hear, just to get the context of what we were talking about for that line item?
Yeah, when we, when we looked at the reduction of two positions at Saco Middle School, it's essentially based off mathematical numbers. We tend to have ten classroom teachers in all grade levels throughout our school. Our highest classroom, class size is currently at Burns School, and I believe it's fifth grade, and I just, I would need to pull it up here to remember exactly the right place. But we tend to be in a ratio where we're about one teacher to twenty students. And when we looked at having, currently there are eleven teachers at grade seven and grade eight, and those would be our lowest ratios in the district in the seventeen category. And when we looked at the budget and the decision, the one is that it still creates a situation where the lowest ratios would be in those grades. We can service with ten teachers, and I think it's important for me as a superintendent or for any of us is that if I was here tonight asking for additional staff in a particular area, I would be coming to you probably with some ratios and some math about the reasons why. And I feel like I have to do that in the reverse as well. So when our ratios make sense to do things one way, we follow that direction, just like a couple of years ago when I came and said, we've got to add some ELL teachers real quickly. Our numbers dictated it, and so I would go back to those numbers. I believe in the memo that you received last month, there was all of our ratios and class sizes there, so that's really important to us is that just want to follow that trend. When we have something that dictates something, I want to be able to ask for it with the support behind, and when there is an opportunity for us to look at something differently and math leads us in a direction, I would come with that same recommendation so that you guys, the public, the board, doesn't feel like it's just always a one-way street. It's a, it's a both. And we, you know, again, if kindergarten came in in the fall with a super high number of numbers and it was over what we think, I might be back here in the fall asking for the school committee to hire a kindergarten teacher. And in the past, whether it's been here, not so much here, but in other districts, when I've had a bubble in the fall, we've come back and been able to add that position because I think people know that there is some flex. When you talk about supplies, so one thing that happened with supplies last year, and you will, there were some increases in the budget and supplies, is just like you guys in the city, we use a requisition system to build all of those things that you see online in our book. And last year, we had about fifty thousand dollars worth of supplies get hung up in that system, and so we've just had to adjust throughout the year. So we've added those back in, so you may see a line that's a little bit more than you saw the year before because we just had this glitch in the computer system, and we had to just adjust throughout the year, and now we need to get them to that pre-level without the adjustment.
Council Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and Superintendent Ray. I guess your comments led me to two questions I was trying to work through. One is about the student-staff ratios, and I'm wondering where ours fit into kind of regional and statewide norms. And the second is, as I look through the comparisons between our total cost per pupil and some of the comparisons you've given us, I'm wondering about the relationship between expenditures and educational outcomes and what the relationship there is and what we should expect kind of based on where we are on that chart.
So first, let me answer, let me answer your first question about class sizes.
Thank you.
In any situation where we're around or less than one to twenty, we're in really good shape. When I had a conversation with Scarborough Superintendent, you know, kind of looked to the north, looked at what surrounds us, they're looking at, in their middle school, twenty-two, twenty-three students. In Gorham, they have about twenty-five kids in an elementary classroom. Ours are all in the twenty or under range, and their middle schools are at about twenty-eight. Very large out there. Kennebunk, about the same as us. Bedford, about the same as us. If you tend to get a little bit more north, you're seeing much higher twenty-twos to twenty-fives in a lot of classrooms. Sometimes space dictates that. Situation at, at Burns School is even if we had a little bit of a bump, unless we're going to put a UA teacher onto a cart, that's going to be a very difficult issue to add one because there's just not a classroom. Certainly, we've got, in some nice new buildings that we'll talk about, we'll certainly have some more flex than that, but, you know, your building space is a challenge and dictates some of those pieces. So class size-wise, I feel very good about where we are versus where others are and what their policies in those districts have in place. When I talk about, when we talk about expenditures, I don't feel like, like I could give a truly solid answer based off just money alone. Because we know that one of the more difficult pieces to overcome is poverty. And so just saying that because Cape Elizabeth spends three thousand dollars more per child doesn't necessarily draw a straight line to greater academic achievement, probably as much as looking that five percent of their population lives in poverty versus thirty-one percent, and I suspect there's limited diversity for students there that English isn't their first language. So I, so I think there is the money piece and opportunities, yes. What more could we do with this? And when you sit down and you say, three thousand a student times X number of students, you'd say, oh, yeah, you could provide some opportunities. But I probably would be sitting to you or saying, what can we do to use that money to change the opportunity gap that exists between those who have certain means and those who don't? And I feel pretty strongly that the opportunities that some of our children have follow those socioeconomic lines versus others. So I don't know that I could give you a straight answer. We can build programs. With money, we can build programs, whether that be for high achievement or for kids who need extra help reading or to provide opportunities, but I don't know that it's necessarily always just, wouldn't be as clear as to say for a thousand dollars more, I could get you four points on an NWEA test.
Thank you, appreciate it.
School Board Member Truman?
Just as a follow-up to, is this on? Just as a follow-up to William's question about the, sorry, School Board Member Gail's question about the two teachers or the two positions that we're cutting at SMS. I think the one thing that he didn't mention was that those positions currently are not filled, so there's, no one's getting the ax, if you will, so.
In all those situations, we have a landing spot, two aren't filled, and we have a landing spot, so nobody has job loss. That would be, you know, we have an offer for them.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? Okay, not seeing any questions? Moving on to item B of the joint meeting, bond question and estimates for the tax impact.
Okay, so before we jump to the bond question, because we know that will probably be a little bit more conversation, I want to draw your attention to this document, okay? This is a document that is a requirement of State Department of Education for construction. It's what we work on and have been doing the entire time with Oak Point as we prepare for final submittal, State Board of Education approval, when hopefully we race back to that meeting. Meg will be here on the tenth, and we'll have numbers to fill in, and you guys will get to take a vote of what to put on the bond question. This will be for the state project, and please know that draft is on the top as we are fine tuning things left and right. Still have another meeting on Friday. But essentially, this breaks down all of the costs that you would have for a construction project, ones and items that the state will pay for, things that they won't pay for, like when we talked about the overall square footage, we were paying for about, I think it was like five thousand square feet so that we could have a bigger gym, space for parks and rec, and additional cafeteria space in this piece. This is a very detailed document that goes about purchase price, square of the land, movable equipment, technology, percent for art, project reserves, advertising, insurance, title insurance, bond, all of these pieces of building a building. And what I need to, something that I learned through this process is that when you have a state construction project, once you set that budget, even if Phil were to win the lottery and donate money to us, say, you know, I wanted to have more playground equipment, I'd like it to donate, once you go through that process, you can't change that budget upwards because of the state construction piece, and it's something I learned. And so there is an item on here that we're going to talk a little bit tonight about, and that's solar. So as we go through this, I just want to draw people's attention that right now, that this, the school for the state share would be one hundred and one million dollars covered by the state. So a hundred and one million dollars covered by the state, and currently nine-point-two million dollars locally. Now, in that nine-point-two million dollars is a proposal that we're discussing to put solar panels on the roof. We've been really exploring what the options are to make this a kind of as zero, kind of creating enough power based off what our estimates are that we could produce as much with solar as we can. We are expecting the building to, to need one-point-one million kilowatt hours a year, and we have a situation where approximately two-thirds or seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine kilowatt, thousand kilowatts could be generated from solar panels on the roof. What this paper shows you, this one from Revision Energy, and I've been working on this, we worked on this Friday, and I've got a few questions, is that there's two ways to do solar. One is to own the system. It's your solar array on top of your roof, and you upfront the cost of one-point-four-eight million dollars. There are some investment tax credits where you would receive four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars in return after completion of the project and it's online. In over a twenty-year savings period, you'd be looking for electrical, you'd save about two-point-three million dollars. Pretty, sounds pretty good. On the other side is a situation where a private investor kind of leases the space from you, and they pay the upfront costs. There's no upfront cost to the city or the project. They pay for the energy, they receive the rebate, and it looks like the savings on this one would be one-point-three-nine-two million dollars. And so when I do that math, there's only about a million dollars difference between you owning it and somebody else owning it. And you would possibly be having this part of your bond, which you would be paying interest on. So I need to look into this piece a little bit more about which direction we would want to go, because if you were borrowing an extra million dollars and you were paying interest on that for twenty years and the savings wasn't as great, I think that we have to explore this number a little bit more. If that was included in the project of the nine million, as we look to explore this, at no point would you guys have to install it because you can not do things, you just can't add things to it. And so that would give us a little bit more time to research this piece. Additionally, you will see that this design is built for geothermal heat, and that carries a local premium of one-point-two million dollars. However, through the infrastructure IRA, what the Inflation Reduction Act, you'll receive about one-point-two million dollars back after the completion of this that goes directly back to the city of Saco. So even though you're, have a cost there that's above and beyond, you'll get a tax credit piece through that act to cover about one-point-two million dollars or even a little bit more than that. Biggest reason for something like geothermal is that both of those buildings will have climate control, so you'll actually not have to worry about June calls and being ninety degrees in a building because you would have a climate-controlled system throughout that When you look at the overall cost of this building, you're looking at the state picking up ninety-one-point-eight-six percent of this cost with the locals picking up eight-point-one-three. And remember that there is a one-point-four million dollars added to that number as we go down the solar piece, so that number could, could come down significantly. We are working on the same type of document for the local project, not quite refined yet, but you're looking at, for the local project, approximately a thirty-million-dollar piece so that both of these schools, our goal was to have it between forty and forty-five million dollars. And if you saw the memo that I put in the school committee packet, and I can send one of those out to you guys, that looks at, I just want to pull that up, I don't want him to speak.
Any questions at this time?
Hold on just a second, I want to, just... So if we were at forty million dollars... So if we were at 40 million for a total bond payment for both schools, the, based off the information Jason and Glenis worked on, you'd be looking at $236 a year for a $400,000 home in tax increase. At 45 million, you'd be looking at a $400,000 home, it'd be 272 is what we're estimating right now. And all of that will be continued to be refined over the next few weeks as the budget piece gets refined. The question before this group is going back to a debate that we had around a singular bond question, or two bond questions. And that's the part where I stop talking, and we get all of you guys to have a conversation about those next steps, because in talking with Bill Stockmeyer today, they really think that, so that they can prepare the paperwork for the 10th, that that decision from the one or two should come from you guys in the next week or so, two weeks, to give that conversation of what do they run, what do they present to you so that we can notify the public on the 10th, vote for, and get a little more information.
Okay. Any questions for Superintendent Ray? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. So, just circling back to the latest information on, I guess, movement towards green technologies, and I certainly don't want to come off as being opposed, because I'm not outright, but I do have some concerns, and I would hope that we would investigate this further. Are there current schools that have been built with solar or geothermal that we could be given an example of, or how they've performed? Because where I'm concerned is the city of Saco, I mean, in many ways, we're kind of a test in this direction to begin with. We spent millions of dollars on a geothermal system at the train station that last I knew was abandoned entirely. I believe we did the same with the fire station. I could be wrong, but I know there's been challenges there. The dire, I believe, went that way, and they've had challenges with that system. So personally, I haven't been sold on geothermal, at least in Maine. Maybe it's who's installing them, but when I see, you know, a price tag of over a million dollars for the geothermal system, I think I'd rather go with a more conventional system that I know is going to operate in a way where we're not going to be left like we have at the train station at times with no heat when we're putting, you know, children in these schools. So I am interested in a little bit more detail in that area. And same with the solar. When we built, or we went forward with the DPW garage, there was talk of that. At the time, I don't think, I know I myself wasn't necessarily 100% sold on solar. Again, there's longevity costs that aren't in these figures. So revision, like any good company is going to spin it the way you would when you want to, you know, present it as a good deal. We did the same thing with the wind turbine, that, I mean, we all know the outcome for that, and that cost well over a million dollars that Saco taxpayers paid for. So again, I think technologies have advanced, but I'm still not 100% sold on these things, knowing that ultimately, while it might be in a bond, is it going to last 20 years? Is it going to last 30 years? Or the taxpayer is going to be continuously asked to pay for this technology? Like it or not, I know, you know, natural gas or oil is not the most, or cleanest thing, but it is reliable, we know that. So, I swear I'm at with it, I'm interested in more information, particularly, I mean, I've been to Sanford, I don't know if Sanford's high school has incorporated any of this. I just, again, having that experience here in the city of Saco, I welcome you to, you know, talk with city staff about the maintenance of these systems, because they're not as easy to maintain as, say, a natural gas burner or oil. And given the fact that you only have two, maybe three, maintenance staff going forward, I can see where it could become a burden going forward. Thank you.
So just, Nathan, just to follow up on that, is one of the big difference in, I don't know, you had an open loop, open well system versus a closed well system, that would be in, and I know there's a big difference in that piece. I had some experience with, when you look at Westbrook Middle School, which is, geez, probably the new school, 12, about 15 years old, they have geothermal in that building. And as far from a heating and cooling standpoint, it's outstanding, because September and June, middle school kids are paying attention and they're not sweating in their seats, and it's just, it's an unbelievable piece. Your electrical costs are going to be more in a system like that, because you're running One of the, one of the things that another building project that is moving forward is not going through with the geothermal, and they're using the air-to-air heat pump exchange And I think that there are some people that kind of would go against the air-to-air exchangers, because in 10 or 15 years, they're looking at some replacements, just like if you put a heat pump in your house, you know, 10 years, those are breaking down. Where the geothermal piece, yeah, you're going to have pump repairs and pieces like that, but seem to have some longevity. I can certainly ask what other building projects they're putting in state systems that they're doing this on, and try to get you some information. But I do think that if set up correctly and done, you know, on a scale like this, I think they have a lot of benefit because of the heating and cooling piece that's there for you. As far as the solar piece, my thought on, and this is mine only, is that unless there was a bigger spread between the kind of the investor and the owner, I would go with the investor, because they're responsible for performance, they're responsible for removal, they're responsible for upkeep. I would go that direction, because there's almost no spread. Why would I want to take care of something that I didn't have to service those pieces? In Bitterford, I've bought into the community solar, and because the tariff rate is so high, the amount of credits that I have compared to what I'm using, I actually have to kind of figure out how I give some away in that situation. That seemed, again, low cost, low barrier, because it wasn't something I owned. And I did make the choice in that community is that we're going to have solar put on the high school over there, and I'm going with the investor, because, one, money to come up with. If I was leasing it or borrowing the money, my interest, I'm paying interest versus getting the savings, and I'm not sure that I want the responsibility of owning it when something goes wrong and with it. So I probably would move towards the PPA. That would be, tend to where I would lean, may not be where everybody else leans. But I also think that it's important to make this decision for this building specifically pre-construction, because the last thing we want is to say, oh, I want to do that a year later, and now you're having all those penetrations put through, a new membrane on a roof. My preference would be if something like this, is have it designed, have it be part of the system, have it installed with the roof, and, you know, have that warranty for the year that you're going to have with anything like this. That would be my recommendation, because, I just, I guess, I'm a big believer also that I'd like us to take some real steps to be as green as we can in these situations, and probably that's evolved over my lifetime, is every storm that I see, whether it hits here or hits Washington County, I tend to say, boy, I've got to do a little bit better job myself.
Okay, Counselor Berman, then Counselor Hatch.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and Superintendent. I guess, taking a slightly different approach than Counselor Johnson, I guess, I want to applaud the efforts to bring modern technology and green technologies to the building. I think it's critical, both from a messaging standpoint, Saco has declared climate emergency, we're engaging in a climate action plan right now, and I think putting our money where our mouth is, is really important. Also, as I understood your presentation, we can expect tax credits that will more or less cover the costs of the geothermal installation, about 1.2 million, it's 1.2 to 1.3 to install it, so there may be a net balance there. And I think photovoltaics have been a very proven technology at this point, and perform really reliably, and will produce millions of dollars of savings over a 25-year life plan, you know, span. And of course, we expect these buildings to be operating for that long. We also expect the costs of natural gas and oil and other fossil fuels to continue to increase and become harder to get over time. So I really, I think we should applaud those efforts, although of course, reliability and maintenance should be at the top of our minds. I also wanted to address your second question of one bond versus two. And here, I'm a little bit more conflicted, but I think it's absolutely essential that the state plan passes. I think we can't put the state-funded project at any risk whatsoever, and based on the numbers you've presented here, especially with the information going out that the geothermal pays for itself with tax credits, and the solar costs make it removed, if we go with the investor option, I think that bond would have no trouble passing. I worry that with a larger local share coming up close to 40 or 45 million, if we put the two together, there may be some opposition. And while my personal preference is that both projects are absolutely essential, and that Saco taxpayers need to vote to support both schools, I do think that there is some risk of putting that 45 million price tag on a single bond. And so my personal leaning right now is to separate them into two separate bond questions.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to weigh in as well on this issue of green, green technology. I think I'm very much interested in sending a message, but I think historically, we've sent messages before, and it's cost the taxpayers a lot of money. So before we aggressively head down this path, you know, confirmation, if in fact those tax credits are available for geothermal, then I would buy into the argument that that's a low-risk message. And then I would also weigh in that unless there are strong circumstances otherwise, I would prefer to have somebody else investing in solar, in case we get down the road a little ways and we find out that the technology really isn't performing to the extent that we thought it was going to, and we're stuck, you know, holding the cost of that. So I just want to weigh in on those two issues, and I would also agree with Counselor Berman's comment, at least at this point, that separating the bonds into two votes, at least in my mind at this point, would probably be the best approach in trying to make sure that we, we like to have both. I hope we get both, personally, but I wouldn't want to lose one because of the other. Thank you.
Counselor Hewitt?
Could you tell me what would happen if one bond passes and the other one doesn't?
Well, let's hope that if in that scenario, that it's definitely the state one that passes. Okay? Because the other way around would not be where we want. We don't want to be in either place. So, the first thing is that we look at ourselves and we say, okay, we're getting a new one through five school, that's going to be over 100 million supported by the state, that's a very exciting day for Saco. Smile, we say, good job, and then we really quickly say, okay, what's next? So one of the things that we know has to happen is Young School has to close. That's the school that qualified, that's closing. We then, us as a group, would start discussing what would be the options that we would have, and administration and staff would need to put their heads together to think about what can work and what can't work. So let's take Fairfield School, for example. We know that Fairfield School is not large enough to have all kindergarten and an expanded pre-k program. We also know that's a very challenging site to build any addition on, and if anybody's walked through the school lately, you're not getting out of that for probably a full renovation for like 20 plus, 15 to 20, I mean, it's roof, it's windows, it's flooring, it's heating system, it's a lot of new items, and still the original bones that are there. I mean, the gym floor, all of those pieces. So you kind of look at that scenario and say, okay, where would be the next pivot to? And your next pivot is to look at Burn School. And truthfully, for a 100-year-old building, bones in that structure are not as bad. Your levels, your levels of that building are more challenging, because you're not going to put a kindergarten or a pre-k kid probably down low. And you think about egress, and those stairs aren't going to be the same code that you would want to have in another building. Also have a cafeteria and kitchen on that bottom level. Do you have space? Yes. Would you need to make serious code and/or upgrades in that building too? Yes. You have alternatives. Could you then look at a system that says, okay, maybe we're not going to expand pre-k all the way? Maybe we continue to look for leased space. Maybe we see what we can program at Fairfield School, and then also look at the four classrooms that we were able to build at Young School, because that building doesn't need to be You'd have to put a lot of options on the table, and at the end of the day, if we're not, if the community chooses not to fund that school, then locally, we will have to make some decisions through the budget, or through talking about a renovation bond for that school, because the hard part would be just taking mechanical systems of that school, from boiler to air to all of those pieces. That's probably more than what you would want to handle in any one single budget, on top of roof needs replacement, et cetera, et cetera. Could an item like a roof replacement maybe qualify for some revolving renovations? Possibly, but it didn't the last time we applied, it didn't meet the threshold. So have some challenges either way. There would obviously be a plan developed that we would discuss with the board and city council, but from a renovation side, there is significant work to do in that building. And, you know, I didn't have a child on that side of town until, and I didn't really, I don't think I'd really been in that school until I became superintendent of schools. And I think it's fair to say that that building is, Fairfield, is as big of a challenge structurally as any condition that we've had at Young School. And when we look at, I remember the first time walking onto the stage at Fairfield School and saying to myself, this is where our counselors and intervention staff meets? Or when I've walked through and you kind of, there was some counseling staff that was kind of behind where the physical education teacher is, and I thought to myself, ooh, we can't do better than this? I think it's a little bit of a challenge, and certainly, my experience as a parent on one side of town versus the other side, didn't necessarily understand that.
In contrast to some of the other counselors, I do feel it would be beneficial to put it on one bond, because as other people had expressed concerns, people that are coming to vote... to vote may have small children with them, may be in a hurry, and may think it's an either or. And I feel because of confusion that we might get stuck in the position that you just explained to us. And as someone who has worked and taught in Fairfield School, I will tell you, if you think that a new school is a want, you have not experienced it. I have sat on the floors. I've hid behind dividers in your hallways to teach special needs children. I have taught on the stage that he's describing, Title I, reading with students, while junk to funk is going on outside in the gym. We're asking a lot of our students. We should give them the best we can. And I feel it should be one bond issue. Thank you.
Counselor Gunn, then Counselor Gail.
I think he was before.
School board, Gail.
I guess I'm just following up on that. I mean, I feel also conflicted about the one or the two. And I certainly understand the reasoning for two. But I guess kind of all along, it's kind of felt like this really isn't a choice. Like, we as a community have decided we are going to get, we want new schools for our children. And I think if we divide it into two questions, it almost presents it as if that second school is a choice. And I really don't think we as a community envisioned it as we were going to fund one, but then somehow cobble together a strategy over a number of years that probably will end up costing much more than what is envisioned in the budget when it's all said and done. So I guess that's why I'm leaning more towards the, I think, as a community, we should have it as one question. That's just my point of view.
Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a couple of comments, though. My first one is I want to piggyback on Counselor Hewitt's comments, though, that, you know, when we decided to go on to the bid list and vote down, split vote on the council many years ago, this idea of bonding and repairing and preserving the existing schools as they were, we may pretty much made a value judgment as a, as a community that we wanted a state subsidized, state-built, state-funded school. And now that we've gotten to this point where our issue is related to pre-K and K, I don't think by separating them that it puts us in the best potential, like I said, just in terms of just the worst-case scenario, if this thing goes, you know, if some one part or both parts are voted down based off of nothing more than optics or confusions when you're taking, you know, the labor person goes into the voting booth and they have to look at two bond questions and they're trying to, you know, their eyes are glazing over. It's, you know, I've been criticized before by this opinion. This is the reason why at the state and the federal level, there are omnibus bills, though, where people compromise and they put things into separate bills because they realize that the myth of the up or down vote on single issues is not how the real world works. And in this case, there's nothing behind the scenes. There's nothing underneath it. We're talking about it in public. People of Saco are screaming for a new school. They have been for 30 years. I think if we have put so much effort into getting it over the finish line at this point in time with this situation that we've been granted by the state, which is a great situation, why risk it? I have faith in the Saco taxpayers that they would pass it. We are not, some of our neighbor communities, though, that tend to be a little bit more tight when it comes to issues of this nature, when it comes to the school system. My experience is that Saco taxpayers usually, they will, I mean, they will complain about taxes, though, but they'll stop complaining when it comes to talking about their kids. And when it comes to finally getting something that's so been sort of this background noise the last 30 years, though, I really don't think, you know, it's worth the risk to separate the two when having them together is exactly what we wanted and what we've envisioned. So that's how I feel about that. My follow-up, my question is getting back to the issue of solar power. Because I was at the school board meeting last week, and it was, I was reminded that the, that the pre-K through K building that's planned for that site has sort of a hip roof and it's not really designed with solar in mind. Now, because that is sort of our local option that we're paying into, is that design for the local school, it's so etched in stone that it behooves us from ever even, you know, examining that as a potential for solar? Because like I said, you know, the idea to get to net zero, when you got both buildings there, that seems like a home run. So just an opinion on that, Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah. So when you look at that, again, design for the smaller school, the local school, again, very thoughtful around cost to taxpayer on that piece. And that's designed with a roof system that's not flat based off cost. There's also some looks pieces that go into trying to keep that smaller cottage-y type feel for that school building. You'd be able to put solar panels on the southern exposure of that piece, but probably it's not a situation where you would, it would be worthwhile to cover all sides of that. You'd see a significant increase if you went to a flat roof in that situation. And so you'd have to weigh whether those costs are worth the trade-offs of what you would generate solar-wise. You do have the ability, if you wanted to, on the site in the future, that you could go with something not off on the roof. But there's some development and cost to that. I think the other piece that would want to be part of that consideration is that we were trying to create that outdoor classroom, woodsy feel with the trails mixed in. And so we wanted, and additionally for neighbors, keeping some of that tree line as a buffer. So there's just a lot of different pieces that probably go into the conversation of that second piece in solar of how much you could generate. And quite frankly, to look at that structure and the timing, we haven't kind of gotten that far yet.
As a follow-up, because, you know, with the, you know, the state, you know, mandated in terms of the size of the property, et cetera, et cetera, which has led us to using this particular property.
Yep.
As opposed to other properties, would there be any, I know this might be getting ahead of the game a little bit, would there be any restrictions going forward, whether or not we put solar panel on the roof or not, to actually put in freestanding solar somewhere on that property in the next 20, 30 years, et cetera?
I think that would only, that would be a local-only decision.
So at this point, the state's out of it. They don't have anything to say.
Correct.
I just want to be, everyone, so we're all clear on that, though. That's, I think that's.
Correct. Down the road, you'd have the ability to do those things after some of the time limits have expired. I think it's like, was it two or three years, Meg? Three years that you kind of can't really make a lot of changes. And again, some of the other solar pieces might not necessarily be on this site. But now that we have a plan and have some understanding, it may be looking at is the purchasing solar credits through Community Solar to incorporate the needs from Saco Middle School and their uses into that calculation. Looking at some of those other pieces, maybe a bigger school department slash city approach of, is it just buying to look at the offset for schools' things? Or is that a greater conversation about all the electricity that the city uses for all municipal buildings? And it may be more beneficial to think of that larger plan outside of this building.
Well, I know the climate adaptation report that the planning department and other departments in the city have put together, I think it'll be for the council about another month or so. So it's one of those things where if there's any more information that we could have prior to, you know, this bond question in terms of anything solar-related, because I said, the promising, it's very promising, just with what's been presented in terms of a long-term thing. But there's no reason we have to stand attention for, you know, the rest of our city. Because we, we know there's going to be a climate plan and the public was very enthusiastic about it. And something we're going to be able to adopt as a city, though, but no reason, you know, no reason to sort of, you know, do nothing on it simply because we haven't gotten that report yet. So any information that, you know, your office can provide to us additionally in the next couple of weeks, I think, is going to inform our decision because to Counselor Johnson's point, yes, we have been burned on, shall we say, more primitive versions of the technology in the last 10 to 20 years, the windmill obviously being the most obvious example, but, you know, so viable point. Thank you.
School Board Member Roach.
First, on the geothermal and solar, total agreement with Counselor Johnson that Saco's days of being a guinea pig on this stuff should be over. But, you know, these technologies are more established now. Gorham High School has had geothermal for, I think, 10 years. And then also, this is going to be the biggest elementary school in the state. And I'd like to know if the state, investigate more of the state's interest in propping up Saco in terms of showing it to the world that the school is carbon zero. So more discussions on that outside the DOE's funding of the school. And then on the bond question, I just think regardless, which, how we all want to word this, education of the voter. I mean, I don't fear either question format, but it's the education of the voter. I mean, we did, we did go through that process to educate the voter on the sewer bond. And the sewer bond was $50 million. And if it's a combined question or a standalone, I mean, we should be able to convince our electorate that a school is absolutely needed and well worth the funding. Thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Berman.
Yeah, I guess I just found some of the conversation around the one versus two bond question to be really interesting. And I think the framing it as one project kind of changed my thinking on that a little bit. It is one project, and the two schools are essential, and they really work together to meet our students' needs. And we don't have, I mean, Counselor Hewitt made that point through a question, we don't have a good second option if one passes and the other didn't. There's really not a good way forward in that scenario. And like School Board Member Gail said, any other option probably ends up costing the taxpayer about as much or more in the long run, anyway. And I found those arguments pretty convincing and have changed my mind a little bit about the one versus two bond question. And I'd be really happy to support one bond question if that's the way the group wants to go forward.
I'd like to add, again, whichever way the bond question does go, to School Board Member Roach's point, not only education, but I'm hoping that the administration will be working with the city communications department for the percentage of residents who do not have children in the schools, who do not follow the school Facebook pages and the superintendent's newsletters, Saco Moms and Dads, you know, any of the social media, so that we can get the information on the city side for those residents. We've seen it in the site polls, the straw polls, where people are saying they didn't know because it's been focused on the city side or on the school board's side. So I'm hoping that the collaboration of the two communication departments will work together to cross-reference all the information. I think that's going to be an important piece. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree with Mayor McVale. I think that there is a good segment of the population in Saco that still doesn't have a clue what's going on, which in many ways is sad, but at the same time, it's understandable. And again, that goes back to education. It definitely needs to step up. I'd like to see the same level that we did see with the wastewater bond or DPW in the past. And that is going to take engagement on the city side because I don't think the school department has that level of personnel to do it. And just back to the question of one versus two, you know, obviously, ultimately, I'm not going to, you know, fall on the sword one way or the other. But I still believe that the right path here is two questions. Obviously, I would hope that the public would support both. But in fairness and to be transparent in this process, it is a choice. This isn't how this initially came about. We started talking about replacement of a young school only. Now, I had my personal feelings about all of our schools, but there are a segment of the population that may still only want that. Again, I don't support that personally, but I think giving them that opportunity is the right thing to do ultimately. The flipside of this, again, what happens if we package it all into one and, God forbid, they vote the whole thing down? And I hear it. I hear the grumblings of people that have told me that, right? Like, if you, if you package it that way, they're committed to voting no on a, on a city-funded only. So if you put it into one, they're very bound or likely to vote no to the whole package. And I don't know, and this is a question for you, Mr. Superintendent, where does that leave us in regards with the state if something like that was to happen? Do they continue moving forward, the city, or do they kind of, you know, pack up their paperwork and move on to the next person on the list?
So I would need to get that clarified with Scott. My understanding is that you sometimes can get another bite at the apple, but there's time limits on that piece. And so let's, for just playing this out, situation, say, if nothing was successful. And then you guys made a decision that in 90 days, you needed to vote again. One of the challenges here is we know that we need to have X number of people come out based off charter requirement. So you're really pushing that, probably that decision, to November and hoping that you're going to be worked with the DOE. And that's a, you know, Meg and I will be there on Friday with the DOE and we'll clarify what that would mean. But this is not a, you probably would not get any more than one other bite at that apple before your time has expired. I know that one of the questions that was asked of Meg and I when we were at the state board meeting for the land was, why is it so much later than when, November of 2020, when you got the official notification? And we had to go through that process. It didn't really start until, some of the process until August of '21. And Kevin went with us that day to go for the first meeting with the DOE. And then, you know, we thought we had a piece of property that then wasn't on the market. And we've gone through and looked at so many of them that just took time. And so I'm not sure, they're getting towards the end of their cycle. And this summer, they're putting out the rating cycle for the next time around. So I'll get that clarification and email people of what that does look like.
Thank you.
Counselor Gunn.
Just as a clarifying question, so I can imagine that next week, we will have a one-vote item commentary to decide whether or not it's one or two bond questions will be next week's agenda?
That would possibly be yes, the scenario.
Okay. And I'd like to just throw in, I know I've been a broken record on this and I've gotten plenty of pushback, but because not only will it be a yes vote, whether it's one bond or two bonds, but it requires a certain amount of the population to turn out in relation to previous elections, I still think November election would have been a slam dunk one way or the other because you're guaranteed to have a massive turnout in a presidential election. In June, there's nothing else. There's no other power line corridor like we had the last couple of years. There's no casino-rusino situation. All that is, is local people running for office. And as of right now, there isn't any contested primaries, though. So we're putting a lot of, I mean, I'm not a gambling man, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't have gambled on June, though. So all things being fair, a lot of things I'm motivated by putting, you know, into one question as opposed to two is because we've already handicapped ourselves in the need to getting this over the, the desire to gain it over the finish line by putting it on the June ballot as opposed to November. So that's how I stand on things. And like I said, I have faith in Saco taxpayer that if we pass it out of council to go to the voters, it's, we're not clerks here. We're basically, if we pass it out, that is implicit endorsement by the council. And I certainly hope that the public will consider that come June. But again, at that point, it will be on us to advertise it and really drive the message home that the Saco council, regardless of our differences of opinion on the particulars of the project, have put our weight behind this. And we think it's the best option for the city long term. And I hope it all comes to fruition because, you know, if not, it's going to be a long summer when we try to figure out what's to do next. That's all I got to say on that one.
Any other comments from councilors or school board? Any other school board members have their thoughts or opinions on which bond to go? Present to counsel. Okay. Anything else, Superintendent Ray?
I think I've kept you here long enough tonight.
Good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that will conclude the joint meeting with the school board for the evening. We'll take a quick five-minute recess and resume at 7:58. Let the record reflect that all record members are present with the exception of Counselor Archer, who has been excused. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance. In the United States of America, we are committed to the citizens, on the mission of the individual, the community, and the essence of our society.
Okay, that takes us to item number four. There is no general this evening. Item number five, committee correspondence to council. Is there any committee correspondence? Okay, not seeing any. That moves us on to item number six, and that is public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes. Okay, not seeing any members asking to be recognized. Item number seven is the approval of the minutes for February 26, 2024, and March 4th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, roll call, vote. Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes passes six-zero. Now takes us to item eight, and that is the consent items. There is one item on this evening, and that is to confirm the mayor's appointments to the Arts Commission of Lindsay Calvert, Gloria Warner, and Jessica Wood. Is there a motion to approve the consent item?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on the consent item? Okay, roll call, vote. Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Now takes us to item nine, and that is the action items this evening. First on the agenda, item A is a public hearing, renewal application for a special entertainment permit for the Golden Rooster, and that is assigned to Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Golden Rooster Restaurant at 236 Main Street has applied for a new special entertainment permit. Permit would be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment 93-2. Move to open the public hearing.
Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. And roll call, vote. Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to open the pass, uh, public hearing passes six-zero. If there are any members wishing to speak, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes. Okay, not seeing any members of the public wishing to speak. Counselor Johnston.
I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the new application submitted by the Golden Rooster Restaurant for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. Move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Takes us to item B, and that is the final reading, Housekeeping Ordinance Amendments to Chapter 179, 188, and 230. And that is assigned to Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McVale. City staff work together to identify areas of ambiguity within Chapters 179, 188, and 230 of Saco's ordinance. The overall goal of the Housekeeping Ordinance Amendment is to add cross-references to other key ordinances, I'm sorry, other key ordinance sections, clarify uses and definitions, to remove duplicate uses and definitions, and better align zoning descriptions with the uses within the zones. Be it ordered that the city council hereby ordains the housekeeping amendments to Chapter 179, Site Plan Review, 188, subdivision of land, and 230, zoning of the City Code of ordinances as presented in the March 18th City Council Meeting Packet Materials.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McVale. Total support of these changes. I just wanted to remind the council that the housekeeping nature of this particular effort. In her memo included in tonight's packet, Director Prescott has appropriately noted several additional zoning ordinance sections that will need further attention from the council. Specifically, they are contract zoning, urban green space, and setbacks for multifamily uses, which I hope to help preserve urban green space. For those of us on the council who have a history of engagement in the formation of our current zoning ordinance via the ZORs process completed several years ago, we recognize the need to consider additional amendments. These include other sections of the zoning ordinance requiring adjustments and better alignment with the recently adopted comprehensive plan. Based on communications with Mayor McVale and City Administrator Bohenko, I anticipate scheduling a council workshop session shortly after the final fiscal year 2025 budget deliberations. In this workshop, I hope the council will discuss the zoning items listed in Director Prescott's memo tonight, along with other proposed zoning ordinance amendments brought forth by this council at that time. Also hopeful to have a robust engagement with a broad cross-section of the citizens of Saco, who in my opinion are our most important stakeholders when considering land use ordinances. I'm looking forward to those discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Again, along those same lines, I've appreciated this process. I feel it's been relatively collaborative. So I look forward, as we go forward, there are several other things that have kind of crept my attention over the weekend as I looked more robustly at all the ordinances. I, you know, again, look forward to in the future taking up again. So, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, not seeing any roll call, vote. Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Takes us to item C, and that is one reading, Proposed Need-Based Ambulance Billing Adjustment Policy, and that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is a concern with the new state law that requires cities and towns to bill patients for treating but not transporting. The treat no transport cost is $750 per incident. Because of this new, because of new information received from Saco Fire Department regarding the number of citizens affected by the insurance company's decisions not to pay the new higher fee, City Administrator John Bohenko believes it is appropriate to suspend the treat no transport billing fees for one year. Be it ordered that the city council hereby approves the one-year suspension of the treat no tree, transport billing fee. The treat no transport billing fee shall be revisited in March 2025 and may be reinstated if deemed appropriate at that time. All other ambulance billings shall remain in place. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston? Any discussion?
Your Honor, I might?
Yes, please.
I, I, I gave everybody a copy of a change in what we had proposed, and that's as a result of information that we just learned and also some of the concerns we had with the interpretation of the state law. And I talked to Senator Bailey today, and I think it's in our best interest to suspend the treat no transport right now, the fee, so that we can get better handle on what's going on with the insurance companies and a better interpretation of the state law. I would ask that the fire chief come forward to talk about the issue. I believe this is, just one thing that note is in January and February, we sent out 90 bills for the treat no transport at $750. And those people probably would not get the insurance coverage. So I believe that it's important that we were able to suspend that billing until such time as we have better information and that we don't, it was never our intent to have this fall on the individual rate payer. I mean, certainly the fire department has no intention of wanting that to happen. So there has been issues with this, and we want more time to be able to go and talk to other people. I know I talked, like I said, I talked to the senator today. So there might, there's an interpretation issue that I'm very concerned with. I don't want to do anything other than that right now because I don't want us to have any unintended consequences with our billing because we, we do have a substantial billing for those that are transported to the hospital. Reimbursement is going fine with that. So this is not a substantial amount of money that we would be bringing in. It would be if we charged everybody $750, but I don't think the city council wants to do that because, you know, right now, like I said, there's like 90 people that we bill. But I want the chief to come forward because him and his staff have been working on this as well.
Chief Russ?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity, although I think the city administrator's done a really good job of summing this up for us. Just a little bit of history, last year at the state year at the state legislature, there were a number of initiatives that were intended to support the sustainability of the EMS system in the state of Maine. There are several challenges. We've talked about some of the challenges, and other parts of the state, they would say it's crisis. So this legislation was intended to hold insurance carriers responsible to pay for the service. The law says they shall pay. In 2023, in Saco, commercial insurers paid only about 6% of all monies collected for treat no transport. So far in '24, we're seeing basically the same practice, low payments from commercial insurances, and they're either applying them to high deductibles or just an outright denial. So we're still seeing the burden of the, placed on the user of the service, and this was not our intent, nor do we believe it was the intent of the legislation. We support and agree with the city administrator to implement a one-year suspension, so we can take a closer look at this, to address the unintended consequences of changing our fee schedule as we did in December of '23.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief DuRoss or a city administrator? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Fortunately, I've never had the privilege of being transported or being in one of our ambulances, at least as an adult. So this kind of all is, is new to me. Is it fair to say, when I was looking at the fee schedule, that right now, if I was to fall down and skin my knee, and my neighbor calls the ambulance, they come, guys show up, it's actually cheaper for me to get in the ambulance and go to the hospital than for you to just administer services and leave?
Our bill would be cheaper, but the hospital's bill would be quite extensive.
Correct. But I could get to the hospital and then leave. Right? Correct? I'm just saying, it, it seems on paper, when I look at it, kind of absurd. So, yeah, so I'm obviously, I'm happy we're, we're going in this direction.
The fire department is really interested in serving the public, and, and there's a lot of instances where there's minor items that they go for to help people up if they've fallen, that might have a, you know, a issue with, with their diabetes, sugar levels. So I think the chief is right. It's just really something we didn't intend, but now we have this situation. We're looking at, you know, 90 bills out there that I'm sure you'll hear about if we don't do the suspension. So I think it's important for us to do it. And then we have to, we will, if we feel comfortable, we'll come back even earlier than one year. One of the things we really want to make sure that we can do is charge for, specifically, let's say, have a minor charge for it, so that we can recover our supplies and things of that sort. But we don't want to do anything, because the way it's been told us, and we have to get confirmation from others, that we can actually charge what we want to. You know, it's either all or nothing, the 200 times of Medicare.
Right. So we have, for a number of years, billed for no transports where we provided treatment or provided a level of care. The billing rate was very low, did not, and it doesn't across the state, cover the actual cost for the service. And how do you measure the time that that ambulance is not available for another call? So this was, this was a proposal across the state of Maine to help the services get reimbursed for all of the service that we provide. So the, we'll, I think, if we take a year, we can find that balance, and if it's applicable and we're allowed to, we could maybe come up with a better number. But about somewhere between 25 and 30% of all of our calls are actually no transports. Now, some are treat no transports, and some might be a false alarm or unintended call for service. But we have a high number of no transports, and each time we go out, that ambulance is out of service, there's people on it, and there's, and there's a, there is a little bit of cost of doing business. So that was one of the intentions, but we certainly did not want to put it on the backs of the, the users, the self-payers. And I think, I'm up here, we're trying to protect our reputation also. That was not our intention, and we agree with, let's stop and take a breath and pause and make sure we're getting it right.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston?
So, in that regard, you said there's about 90 bills out there?
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to be able to forgive those as well. Yeah.
That's what I was-
No sense in, no, no.
I was hoping that it would, it would go, you know, back.
That's a lot of money for somebody that's on a fixed income.
Okay.
Okay, Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank Chief DuRoss in your office, and especially the city administrator, for being on top of this, when it was brought to my attention by a constituent. And, you know, by the grace of God, go why, though, you know, I've never, something I never really thought about in terms of the tran, you know, ambulance coming to help folks out. They don't need to go to the hospital, but it's by its very nature a medical visit. And, because I looked into, you know, is there any third parties out there? I talked to some of the folks that age-friendly, and because there's a medical component, insurance won't touch it. It really precludes a lot of folks out there who have, you know, the overhead and the organization to help from being able to help. So essentially, being a small state and a poor state, ambulance is the only real game in town. And what health and safety is, you know, the paramount to any of our positions, whether it's here or in our, you know, police, fire, and whatnot. So being able to forgive these, these bills is a great step in the right direction. Once we get some clarity, you know, in terms of our obligations, you know, vis a vis the state, because the original idea that was put forward by the city administrator is to have a sliding scale, pay based on ability to pay, and it would be, be a nice situation where, again, it would cover, you know, maybe the incidentals, though, but not actually be, you know, a burdensome fee, though. And I think we can all agree that with our current system, it would be equitable, especially if it was based on the ability to pay. Now, if that is not possible, then I would certainly, you know, look towards a way to, you know, not charge people in any and all possibil, possible situations as possible, because, like I said, there's no other option. And, you know, we have an obligation to make sure people are safe in their homes, and that calls, that includes calling ambulance. We don't keep them safe in their homes by then basically giving, giving them a bill they can't pay and forcing them to decide on rent, food, et cetera. So I really want to applaud both Chief DuRoss in your department and city administrator for being on top of this, when it was brought to my attention by a constituent, who, as we've found out, is just one of many who've been subject to the situation. And I think this is a great example of us, you know, nipping something bad in the butt when we see it coming, and, you know, not sitting on it and studying it to death. And, but in the coming months, we can figure out a way forward that's equitable for everybody and most certainly fair for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Chief DuRoss, I'm going to react to your comment about protecting your reputation, because I'm going to help you with that. Okay? We owned an assisted living facility for 20 years. I can't tell you how many times we had to call for an ambulance. And I can't even remember a time where it was a bad experience. The, the quality of the people that would answer those calls, and the compassion that they would show to our residents, most of whom were transports, but some weren't. Somebody needed some help off the floor. I would stand right behind that comment of protecting the reputation of our EMS crew. And I'm, I'm also a big proponent of aging in place, and, because I guess I'm pretty close to that, I'm going to, but I do think an equitable, reasonable compromise is, is due here for our, our older population, and I commend you as well for pushing it in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing any other questions or comments. Roll call vote. Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Okay, that now takes us to item D, and that is the election of a parliamentarian. Is there a counselor who would like to take this motion? Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see here. Rule 38, Rules and Order of Business states, "At the first meeting in January, the city council shall elect from its body a parliamentarian to serve for one year. The mayor and the deputy mayor would be excluded from serving in the role as parliamentarian." Be it ordered that the city council move to elect Counselor Nathan Johnston as parliamentarian of the city of Saco for the term of one year commencing March 18th, 2024. I move to approve the order.
There has been a motion made by Councilor Gunn to appoint Counselor Johnston as the parliamentarian. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to echo, I believe it was Counselor Archer's comments last week. Counselor Johnston, for a seniority, definitely knows the book inside and out, though, and definitely be as a first parliamentarian, a practical and wise choice. I just want to throw out there that while it's not in the Rules and Order of Business, that much like the position of deputy mayor, as time passes, if we rotate those type of positions that we elect amongst ourselves, it will allow more counselors to become more familiar with the role of whether chairing the body, or basically, you know, being the one that actually reads the rulebook and makes sure that we're all doing what we were supposed to do. So something to bear in mind as we go forward next year and going forward. But as the initial parliamentarian, logical and practical choice, I think.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Stain.
Motion passes five with one abstention. And just to note, thanks to the IT, we have Robert's Rules of Orders on our new iPads. They did show you. So that should be a, hopefully, good asset to us. Okay, that completes the item actions for tonight. That takes us to item 10, and that is new business, and that is Chapter 106 Flood Plan Management Revision.
We'll have both.
Director Toomey and Director Prescott?
Yes.
I'll kick it off here. The two departments are collaborating on this. These are required FEMA revisions. We are working on mapping at this point. Dave lives in the area, so he can give you more details.
These maps first came out in 2013. Many communities appealed. They came back out in 2017, and we've been waiting ever since. It's always next year, next year. Well, this is the year. They will be effective July 17th, and we will have to vote on that before that. So the maps have not been sent to us, but they do have them on the FEMA's mapping site. So I've downloaded a couple of them, and we're working with our GIS person to get them, so we can have it on our website as a link. It's something that we have to do, because if not, we won't, people having flood damage will not get any funding from FEMA, and our insurance rates would go up, or we won't have it. We'll have more buildings that will get damaged, and will have, not be recovered. So.
In addition, we wouldn't be able to apply for disaster aid either through FEMA?
Right.
As a city?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions for Director Toomey, or, okay, Councilor Hatch, and then Councilor Johnston?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Just a general question. I haven't dealt with flood maps in my banking career for decades, but, but it used to be that if your property was in a designated flood zone, you, you were required to get flood insurance-
If you have a mortgage.
If you have a mortgage. Do we have any sense of folks who live in a floodplain that don't have the insurance, because they don't have a mortgage?
I thought about not having it when I first moved in, because I've never had a claim. But the last few storms have got a little worse in the past, so I'll probably keep it.
There you go. It only takes one claim.
Yes. Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Find my thought again. Oh, goodness. What's the other one? When this comes back, if, if we can, I know that they're working on the maps. I went on to the GIS today, and I've always found those maps pretty hard for me to interpret. I can't figure out if I'm in a floodplain or not. And I'm not trying to personalize this, but it's, it's been something I haven't been able to figure out for years. And, and several years ago, we had, or I had several constituents on North Street that were in the floodplain. We had to go through, you know, getting them out of the floodplain, because it really didn't flood anymore since Sawyer Brook, you know, no longer, it got rectified as far as the culvert system. So just, if we can have a description of where the floodplains are by ward, that'd be helpful, just so I know who may or may not be in the floodplain, including myself.
Most of the maps are aerial maps, and they'll be shaded blue where the flood zone is. So they're pretty easy to read.
All right.
When this comes back, you'll also see some references may change, so we're just verifying the cross-references to different sections, because we had to change some section numbers.
And for most people, the elevation went from an elevation nine to a 13. So that's going to include more people in the flood zone that were there before. So.
It's, again-
That's down-
Just going over it, it seems rather impactful.
Yes.
Okay.
Especially down the beach. There was like 23 LOMERS, which is a letter of map amendment. Because their properties were higher than nine, but they were in a flood zone for the 2006 maps, they were taken out. They're probably all going back in when it goes to 13. Except for North Street. That was a map revision, not a map amendment.
Okay, anyone else?
So we'll bring this back in April for first reading, and then you'll need to set a public hearing. And we have a deadline of the end of, I would say, end of June, just to be sure.
Yes.
Councilor Berman, would you like to take this as the council resource?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that concludes the new business item tonight. Item number 11 is the administrative update. Council, uh, City Administrator Bohenko?
Thank you, Your Honor. First couple items are RFP, the city of Saco was soliciting bids for equipment rental and construction services, and bids for aggregates. The bids will be submitted Wednesday until, excuse me, submittals will be accepted until Wednesday, March 27th, 2024, at 1:00 PM. And then you can visit the Saco webpage and bids and RFPs for additional information. I also have listed the various budget schedules on my written document that is posted as well. In addition, there will be a open house for the Saco Fire Department, and that will be on April 6th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There will be road reconstruction Camp Ellis. Public Works is beginning permanent road reconstruction at Camp Ellis. The second half of March to be ready for paving when the plant's open in April. So all roads to traffic ahead in spring and summer, traffic increases. Access will remain limited until this work is complete. We also had, I did mention, and I did send something out to the city council regarding a dredge meeting with York County. I won't go through the whole thing, but again, it sounds very positive. It is anticipated, or they are aiming to move the dredge from Public Works on March 24th, and hopefully we'll place it in, in the harbor at Wells. Again, I'll be going to another meeting on this in the next week to get more information. As the county minister, manager said, it looks like they're moving forward in a positive way, but still preliminary. They got to do their gathering and their due diligence relative to costs. So I'll keep you advised as to what's happening with that, that issue. The housing, the planning department has applied for most recent funding round of the Housing Opportunity Program with Maine DECD, a $35,000 grant to create a housing for all roadmap. If funded, this initiative would result in a suite of policy recommendations to increase, to increase affordable housing opportunities throughout Saco. And then again, historic preservation, the planning, the department is supporting the Historic Preservation Commission in its initiative to share information with the historic district. The department will be mailing attached letters to every address within the historic district, which will be sent by the end of next week. And of course, we'll have those on the website as well. And that's what I have, Your Honor. If there's any questions, I'll be, we're happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions for a city administrator? Any comments? Okay, that takes us to item 12, and that is council discussion and comment. Any counselors have any comments or discussion? Not seeing any. Item 13 is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Roll call vote. Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. At 8:33. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.